Mr. Cook.
Right.
Mrs. Thompson. Mrs. McHugh, absent. Mrs. Bobsy. Mrs. Rosenoff. Mrs. Drew, is absent. Mr. DeVos.
President.
Ms. Brown. Mr. Long is absent. And Mrs. Truitt is absent.
Here we go. On any amendments to the agenda?
We have two. If we could add to Coach's recommendations, add Professor Reski as Assistant varsity track coach. He was just left off. And to remove a closed session, item number fourteen, with actor item number eleven. I move to support the immediate as agenda for the February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting.
It's moved by member Thompson and supported by member Bobsy to adopt the agenda for the February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting as amended. Any discussion? All favor signified by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Karen, because Karen's not here yet, we will need to appoint a secretary of you. Nancy Thompson will be secretary of the evening until such time as you arrives. Let's get the consent agenda, please.
Under consent agenda, you are putting in minutes for the special meeting on February tenth, twenty twenty-five. The special meeting closed session begins on February tenth, twenty twenty-five as presented. You're also through the general fund bills in an amount of two hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents and an eighteen-year-old checks in an amount of four thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. A total of two hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy-six cents, which checks number seven zero two zero two through seven zero three zero zero and ACH there is worth in amount of five hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-six cents. For a total of eight hundred thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents came with check number seven zero zero four seven voided with additional bills in the amount of and no checks avoided. Under personnel, presentation of the one wants the assistant to all entry principal. New hired Crystal Barnes, EC, SP and DK therapy. Conquer Harvey, junior high softball coach. And corporate assistant, assistant heartbeat track coach. Higher move to for the items of consent agenda as presented.
Four.
It's moved by member Bobsy and supported by member Rosenoff to approve the items under the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? No? All favor signified by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Clear part of the meeting. Student of the month.
Okay. Do we have Ronan Engels? Hi, Ronan Engels. Did you see these?
Oh, no.
Oh, good. This is gonna be a treat to your ears. Ronan has come a long way since the beginning of fifth grade. This is from Mr. Chip Black. Okay? He has shown growth with his academics, social behavior and his maturity. I am so proud of his effort and I can't wait to see where this year will take. Keep up the great work. And then Mrs. Hank can throw and spend so much fun to watch you learn and grow. Never give up. I apologize. Can you give Ronan a round of applause? I'm gonna be busy just everybody's hands. We'll go back when we need. There you go.
Right over here.
Yep, right here. This is confusing. Here, combine first. There you go.
So the high school student of the month is Brian Romowski. He is currently in the district team right now. So he couldn't make it, but he did ask me to say this to board. Thank you very much. It's an absolute honor to receive this and he wishes to be here tonight and tomorrow.
We're supposed to stay by you.
Ms. Coppins, junior high student of the month.
I would be so proud of you.
So I actually nominated Brian. Since the day I started as a new staff member, Brian has treated me with respect and kindness. He has a great sense of humor and has really heard saying anything mean or negative. He works hard in and out of the class. We're leading by example. Brian is always willing to help and volunteer when needed. He attends open, extra open gyms, volunteers through the youth league and works to make our sports teams better for himself. He's fierce.
Absolutely.
Congratulations.
All right. Get your pictures. Board recognition celebration. You know, I have one. The cheer team. And certainly. Joe. And it's funny because of work today. One of my counterparts, daughter's competitive. He said, and this is not my words, his words. He says, it's just cheer. And I said, oh, don't ever say that. I said, when you can do, I would say this. When you can do like a roundoff back handspring, then you can say that. Until then, shut up. Because most people can't do what any of these ladies say. So. Yeah. Congratulations. We finished one place out of states, but that's an incredible, still an incredible result of the year. The only one person who gets to hold the championship trophy up in the state. The fact of getting that far from our little school and this team that history can do. Over the year. So great.
I have two of them. First one is for Carolyn, the story out of the elementary school teaches third grade. And she once took another one of her Saturdays to come and support her students playing basketball. And it was like, you know, she was the queen walking in as soon as they all saw her. And the game kind of stopped for a minute. They were going to say hi to her. But it was great. She stayed and made a huge difference. And the other one is, I want you to know that the kids are calling this super cat the goat. The greatest of all time, as far as the poster. Sorry, ladies, but. People can go. We now have a goat. So. Yeah, anyways, I just had to share that when they were like, I never wanted you to even come up with it. But that he was.
All right. Time for being the difference. There are two tonight. I will let the staff layer take it.
Okay. Thank you. First, Mr. Thomas. Dear old friends. All right. So I don't forget anything because this is important and you deserve to be honored. Okay? Tonight, I'd like to recognize and celebrate someone who truly embodies what it means to be the difference. When I think about consistency, fair-mindedness, objectivity, loyal and unwavering encouragement, one name comes to mind. Coach Temmeras. Since two thousand and one, you have been a pillar to this district, shaping young lives, not just in the gym, but in hallways, on sidewalks, in every competition, special event, basically in every situation where you have student interactions, rain, snow or shine. Jamie is a welcoming face who greets our students each day, setting the tone for an environment where they feel safe, supported and ready to learn. He is not just about teaching sports and PE class. He teaches teamwork, resilience and the power of moral and ethical sportsmanship. Every grade, every game, every drill, every high five is an opportunity for him to help his students. And he makes sure that every student feels seen, valued and capable. And one of the most important things about Jamie is if you're not looking for Jamie, you don't necessarily see all of the things that he does because he is like the quiet supporter. He's, you know, behind the stage at the Christmas concert, making sure all the music is queued up. He's doing all the things that nobody usually recognizes, but all of his contributions are what make him so special because he doesn't need or usually receive the limelight. Thank you for your dedication, your heart and your unwavering belief in our students. Thank you for being the difference. Thank you. Coach, who do we have with you tonight?
This is my one daughter, Olivia. She's a freshman. This is my son, fourth grader, Roman. And this is my wife, Michaela.
We are so glad you brought.
And Olivia, you're making me feel really, really. You're so little.
Thank you for coming. You deserve to hear these special comments, too. We want to get your pictures. All right. Okay. I am also filled with gratitude to recognize someone else who truly is the difference. And that person is Rachel Zatkowski. As an educator, Rachel pays deeply as a partner, helping to their students. Planting seeds of knowledge, nurturing growth. That is a con intentional. Still, I thought you'd get it. Planting the seeds of knowledge, nurturing growth of patience and ensuring that each student has the opportunity to thrive. She knows that learning requires hard work, persistence and the belief that effort put in today will lead to a strong harvest tomorrow. As a lifelong learner, she leads by example, constantly seeking out ways to improve her path. This past year, she was one of only two junior senior high staff members to fully engage in the building thinking classrooms professional development. Not because it was easy, because she knew it was best for students. She doesn't just teach math. She cultivates thinkers, problem solvers and students who recognize the importance of being themselves, believing in themselves. Rachel, from my perspective, so she's wonderful for her students, but from my perspective, this is what I love about Rachel. You are a constant source of positivity. Whether it's a warm smile, a helping hand or a well-timed word of encouragement, you lift up those around you. What sets you apart is your commitment to solutions. In a world where it is easy to grumble, dwell on change, dwell on challenges, Rachel chooses a different path, one of problem solving, progress and purpose. And for that, I thank you for being the difference.
Okay. We're gonna jump into reports. Is there anything that, Mr. Dabbler, you want to share from the elementary report? Or we can just keep on?
At a lot of it is just a kind of recap. We've gone again, there's more, there's been more science and reading, professional learning. Lindsay Chalk of St. Care County, childhood abuse neglect. She was there to present about the child safety matters. And those are some of the programs that Nancy actually started years ago. So they're wonderful programs. We're doing more with book forms, PD and actually looking into doing a pilot for six, seven, eight because it's now supposedly being released soon for that. So that's exciting. We've got SATs. And then just regular DDP regarding February twenty-first. We just have that and when parents are going to RISA to be trained. That's about it. Oh, my goodness. We do have already, I'm sorry. We have a total of like seventy students already registered for Kinder RPO, which is very, very, very.
Sometimes.
Yes. We never had this time of year that much, so.
All right. Thank you.
Is that in addition to the?
In addition to DK, but not GSRP or any of the other.
Just DK.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Msakowski.
Yes. February third, Miniterell from RISA provided professional development on the question formulation technique. This strategy helps students enhance their ability to ask meaningful questions about a topic. They foster deep discussions and engagement with their peers. Ms. Sandborn and Ms. Lever incorporated a QFT model into their eighth grade history lesson. It went really well. It encouraged students to think critically and then to explore a subject through inquiry. There's some pictures there for your review. We talked about Ms. Zatkowski. She was one of the teachers. Mrs. Missel was another teacher as well. They completed the three-day building thinking classrooms training. This was non, they started with non-curricular task vertical discussions, which encourage mathematical reasoning and critical thinking. Students across all grade levels have participated and the teachers have shared positive feedback, noting that students are highly engaged and they enjoy the top of the task. Building thinking classroom strategies are ongoing and the process is not fully developed yet. RISA is exploring the opportunity to expand this into other subject areas as well. On February fifth, 10th grade students visited tech. They learned various programs and the opportunities that are available there. Several instructors toured the classrooms with them. They participated in the Q and A session. Tech staff shared positive feedback, noting that Memphis students will well-behaved and a pleasure to host. Tech shadows are going to be hosted on March third through the seventh. Interested 10th grade students will experience specific programs first of all. On February nineteenth and twentieth, Officer Newisky and Mrs. Klein have delivered, including myself, delivered a presentation to all grade levels on inappropriate use of technology and the importance of school safety. Students were engaged, inquisitive. They were actively participating in the discussion. The goal of this presentation was to help students make informed decisions about technology use and reinforce the significance of maintaining a safe school environment. Scholarship night was hosted, or will be hosted, on February twenty-seventh. Higher college advisor, Lindsay. This is an informational night for all 12th grade students. We had to reschedule our sophomore parent night because of snow day and now will take place Tuesday, March fourth. This parent night is geared towards providing information regarding PD courses, tech, dual enrollment and doing our little college. We have representatives from each entity coming to Memphis junior senior high school to speak to parents and students. And we had a really good time last week, Thursday, for our PBIS quarter two. Our event took place. High school students enjoyed a variety of activities, technology room, putt-putt golf, board games and even a volleyball tournament. Junior high students had a belated Valentine's Day dance. And then they also had a board gaming game that we split the cafeteria in half. So half was a Valentine's Day dance. DJ Ash helped out with that. And then we've had some board games and card games. A lot of fun. Students were well behaved and just overall willing to have positive behaviors as well.
Any questions for Ms. Msakowski? Walsh, any for us tonight?
Just a couple of highlights I just wanted to touch on. The governor did come out with her budget proposal for twenty-five, twenty-six. School aid fund is still in a favorable position. She is recommending a three hundred and ninety-two dollars per pupil increase, increase to at-risk funding, continuation of thirty-one AA funds. Several of the funding protocols that were dedicated to the mixers program from this year, they are going to eliminate for next year. At least that's what's in her proposal. This is the very first step in the state's budget plan or process. So now the House and Senate are both reviewing it and then they'll come out with their budget versions and then they'll agree on one final one. And then in the eleventh hour, they'll change it. But no, that's, that's good news. It's at least positive what she came out with and hopefully we see the House and Senate kind of follow suit and make good work for district movement forward. I will continue to monitor that and then as those come out, keep you guys informed as well. And then the only other thing I wanted to touch on was we, Sarah and I had an annual review for our Moody's rating, which is the rating that's used to sell our bonds. It remained at A two. We, RJ and Norton from PFM and Associates, who's our financial planners and advisors, they, he sat in on it and helped us and was impressed with the rating and was very happy. And I thought it was really good. So they all thought it was a favorable rating to help us get good rates on the upcoming bond sales.
And she kept in pretty rigorous lunch for all correct in her budget?
That's the plan as of right now.
And also free, free school for all four units, correct?
That's, yep, that was included in the recommendations.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Walsh?
All right. So winter sports are in the final weeks of the season. Starting wrestling, they won the, both the league championship, VTC and also they districts champs. They finished the season impressive, thirteen and oh and thirty-seven and two. Team wise, they fell short of the regionals, but we did have Brendan Morowski, Kingston No Goodwood advanced to the individual regional, where it was really competitive. We're in a very competitive region for wrestling. So they, they did an amazing season this year. Bowling secured dual conference titles, both boys and girls, secured titles. They competed at regionals this weekend as well. From what I hear, the team sat in like second place through so many rounds and then somewhere just set towards the end, fell slightly short. So they did not qualify as a team. But senior Lauren Castillo signed her letter of intent to bowl at Lawrence Tech and she's heading back to states this weekend for a fourth time. So she's, she's pretty excited about that. Girls' powerlifting took second place at Henry Ford High School two weeks ago, which is a big meet of a lot of Class A schools and they took second. Eight of the girls finished in the top three. Ten out of fifteen of the JV lifters have qualified for states, which is this weekend. So they'll be heading to states as well. Obviously, we kind of heard about competitive cheer, but they also won the big thumb conference championship. They advanced past district even though they had some injuries and had to literally, from what I hear, completely rework their, one of their rounds because they had an injury right before districts. So despite all the snow days and everything else, they, they did extremely well. I'm proud of them. Boys' basketball district plays tonight versus Landmark. So we expect the boys to win tonight. They'll be playing Wednesday versus Sandusky in Kevac. And then our girls team has one more home game tomorrow night and then they head into district play out at Sandusky next week. We are doing a winter sports assembly on Wednesday, second hour. We're gonna announce all of the wonderful accolades. We recognize all of our athletes. Also give out the all academic awards for all of our athletes because a significant amount of our athletes were all academic league again. So that's exciting. So that's kind of winter and to wrap up, spring sports begin March tenth. We've had coaches meetings. We're officially launching junior high softball and junior high baseball. We had meetings today and I think we had twenty, I'm looking at your tongue, twenty-some girls show up?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two girls interested in playing softball and then sixteen boys at the junior high level. So we're excited about that. We're gonna continue to all sport, parent and player meetings that we had in the winter. So we have that date set. As far as on the assistant principal hat, Mr. Zatkowski and I have made eleven positive referral phone calls this month alone, highlighting student citizenship and positivity. So it's really nice to make those positive calls and not just, yeah, it's me calling because your kid did something they shouldn't have been. And then speaking on the presentations that Mr. Zatkowski mentioned, a lot of students have gone home to talk because it has resulted in a lot of reach out phone calls from parents saying, hey, I'm seeing this. Or I checked my child's phone. Or they came home and said, I could get in trouble for this. Is this true? So it has elicited a lot of conversation between parent and student, which has been really nice and there was some really good reach out phone calls.
The winter assembly will be recognized in the morning as well.
Oh, yes.
How many years is powerlifting that's part of your name?
It's still not considered a district sponsored sport. I want to say, I want to say two.
I don't know if it'd be more than three.
Pretty amazing.
Yeah. Boys, we still need to get, we, like the talk with the football coaches about getting the guys, like this is good conditioning for all your sports. The girls are just really taking on.
Is there any talk about boys volleyball? Or high school?
So the problem with boys volleyball is it would be at the same time as boys basketball.
Okay.
So and there's concern that, in wrestling and everything else. There's actually been more interest from the girls with girls playing football in the fall.
Really?
Yes. Our girls, there's been a lot of talk. The girls have been wanting me to really look into it. Because that is now a recognized sport in the state issue.
Is that high school? Is that just for high school?
High school, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, it's in the fall. It's like a fall. It just, this year will be the first year. They tried a bit the last two years, but this year will be the first one. They're gonna sponsor a state tournament. And if you work with the Detroit Lions, everything would be paid for. Yep. If you have a sports team in your vicinity, they will pay for it.
Cool. Any other questions, Ms. Msakowski? All right. There's reports and anything else in the room? Do we have anybody ready to do for public comment? I don't see anybody. Correspondence, the only correspondence we have is our true notes from January, which you should have had for a quick segment. Comments on those questions? Concerns? During that, we will need a motion to go into closed session.
I move to go into closed session at five twenty-seven PM in accordance with the open meetings act, Act two sixty-seven, nineteen seventy-six for the purpose of attorney-client privilege.
It's moved by member Thompson, supported by member Bobsy to go into closed session at five twenty-seven PM in accordance with the open meetings act, Act two seventy-six of nineteen seventy-six for the purpose of attorney-client privilege. Any roll call for those?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. McHugh, absent. Mrs. Bobsy?
Yes.
Mrs. Rosenoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Drew, is absent.
Yep.
Karen, we're in closed session. We'll give moments to the rooms that are clear. We will come back into open session once we are done with closed session. We're back in open session.
I move to remove action item twelve F from the agenda.
It's moved by member Thompson, supported by member Bobsy to remove twelve F from the agenda. Any discussion? All favor signified by saying aye. All aye. Any opposed? Motion Karen, to remove that from the agenda. We're gonna back up now in student report. I'm sorry about that. I'd get you.
So no formal report today with supervisor Morgan, Ava and I are obviously sports and wrestling season, throw basketball season's going on and all the snow days and stuff. We are going to get a Friday to talk about it. Maybe bring some ideas for student appreciation and that appreciation of the assembly you guys are doing. We're going to get more on that and hopefully show at the assembly and talk together about it next meeting. But other than that, we had some plans for some walkouts and stuff, but snow days and wrestling season got a little bit of that. I did an announcement the other day appreciating some skills, how we lived in the early days of the Lions, my sister on the JV team. Yeah, there's some potential, so cool. We really don't have all that much for you guys. I apologize for that, but we're going to, like I said, have a meeting Friday, and we're going to get some work together and get back to you guys with hopefully some stuff.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I know, it's kind of a crazy.
Yeah, all the snow days.
Takes a few months.
Yeah, they got six days, right?
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not going to complain about it.
Literally never let a student.
That's because you're.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Yes, you are, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, we'll move on to Action Item A, Board Scholarship. Let's go ahead and get the motion on the floor.
I move to continue to approve the board scholarship for 2425 school year as presented to support. And it would be the application of the last year. You have a copy of it in your minutes.
It's moved by Member Thompson, supported by Member McHugh to continue to approve the board scholarship for the 202425 school year as presented. Yes, last year's applications in the folder for your reference, it's 50 bucks a member. That's what we chipped in the past, and then we vote on whoever receives it. We do normally get quite a few applications. Some great applications from our students. So the money's due by, I'm not sure when.
Soon as you can.
Soon as you can.
Peyton asked last year, of course, you know, last year, we have a copy of all of them that came in, and then we each selected our top three, and then those top three were submitted to. And that's what we don't know this year. And I told her that we want to come to me to put them together. We want happy to do that. And then the top one is the one that receives the scholarship.
So she's going to submit it to you, and you're going to have this person?
You guys are going to submit it to me. We will get all of the.
Her choices.
Our choices.
You'll get a copy of all of the applicants, and then your top three will just come.
So then she'll toss them out, and then she'll list the firsts, right?
All right, any other questions, discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Get your 50 bucks in to Laura as soon as you can. All right, being course catalog approvals, let's get that motion, please.
I move to approve the elementary junior high course catalogs for 202526 school year as presented. Support.
It's moved by Member Bobstein, supported by Member Rosenau, to approve the elementary and junior senior high course catalogs for the 2526 school year as presented. Discussion. Ready to have a chance to look at them? Any big changes we need to talk about? We've seen today. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Spring coaching recommendations, please.
I move to approve the spring 202425 coaches recommendations as presented.
It's moved by Member Bobstein, supported by Member Rosenau, to approve the spring 2425 coaches recommendations as presented. Any discussion? I didn't see this, right? There's one thing I didn't review, but yeah.
I was just going to ask that, do we put them all in SED for them first map? Because I've seen Tom around like an actual.
Oh, I just, oh.
Those are recommendations.
Okay.
The approval for a coach is, it's just not.
Yeah, we especially hire. It's just a recommendation of.
Also, any other comments, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Here. Good motion for the change order process resolution for the bond.
Okay, I move to approve the change order request resolution for the bond construction project as presented.
It's moved by Member Thompson, supported by Member McHugh, to approve the change order request resolution resolution for the bond construction project as presented. We do have a an update here. Actually, the update's for your thing. The the change order request resolution was sent as a separate email. And certainly, change orders being in the construction business, change orders are plentiful. So this will save us a lot of headache.
We said at the bottom of the meeting, and it was discussed up to 50,000. It used to be 30,000, but they're now saying 50,000. And then when the change orders come, sometimes it costs us money to have an immediate answer than it does to say, oh, we got to get the board together and do something. So that's why the resolution, we consider that right. If an emergency situation's up, it needs an emergency decision, she can make it. You know, maybe we'll turn it now and whatnot. But we did need to have a motion for that to occur.
Thank you, Nancy. Yeah, a lot of change orders, you get a better deal if you approve it immediately. They're time-based sometimes. And that's what we do. All right, any other questions on the change order? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Truman policy updates.
I move to approve the Truman policy updates for ESTA policies for 113, 4113-F and Title IX policies as listed.
It's moved by Member Rosenau, supported by Member Bobstein, to approve the Truman policy updates for ESTA policies 4113, 4113-F, and all the Title IX policies listed as presented. Any discussion? No questions. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Deputy G.
I move that the Board of Education create a temporary position called Superintendent Elementary Principal and approve the contract amendment for Administrator Sarah Dobler to serve in that role until the Board determines the role is no longer needed or otherwise fills the position.
It's moved by Member Rosenau, supported by Member Thompson, that the Board of Education create a temporary position called Superintendent Elementary Principal and approve the contract amendment for Administrator Sarah Dobler to serve in that role until the Board determines the role is no longer needed or otherwise fills the position. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Sarah, your turn.
We did have our first bid for the meeting today. It was fascinating because how they do it is it's like a state luncheon program, and it automatically closes it out at the time. And then it lists on the order, it gives an order from lowest to highest. But then, because one of the districts, so they were like three really close between 1.2 million and 2.2. And that's for the complete works of junior senior high and elementary. And then another one came in several million over that. So what they do is, because it's often typical that, I know this, that when they get through the spunk and they have these post-game interview meetings, they determine like, oh, this person actually didn't include this, or this person had a typo on that. So those will happen, and then there will be a presentation. The Board Subcommittee, Subcommittee Committee will come in, and then we'll go from there and make recommendations. But that's the first, I wrote to get the junior senior high and then the elementary are first foremost. And then the other thing that after the Board Subcommittee Committee meeting happened next week, Don ended up calling Adam and I to a brief conference call with him. And again, because neither Adam nor I have ever done this before. I did not realize that, I thought that when we were having like our buses purchased, our athletic equipment, custodial equipment, instruments, all of those things, I thought they were going to be included in certain big packs based on the timing. What Don was telling me, and that's what this slide is, it's called owner direct purchases. So as soon as we did our bond sale and we get our deposits, the school has allocated that in our triggle, the Department of Treasury application, we are able to start purchasing those. It is very exciting. So we'll work on our RFPs on our end. And Mrs. Griffield, Adam explained it to me because I thought they were going to be in various big packs. So we're going to be able to start looking at, and I know that this is going to be a leading for Sam, that our tables and chairs are actually, you know, kind of pretty hidden from points because they're so out of youth, are out of their usable life, whatever they call that. And then our buses, we're going to be able to purchase. Josh S. is going to be so excited because of the instruments. So all of those things we'll be able to do. The the band, the the bands are, the band sale is scheduled to conclude at March 6th at 11:00 AM. So from what I understand from Bart Now, it'll be very similar to the bid opening that we watched. So basically, in this case, you're looking for who's going to offer the best interest rates that will help save the district money, which is why it was so important for us to have a good rating from Moody's. And because I didn't know how those ratings happen, in your board reports, I did link what Moody's shared with us. It's under the A2 underline. And so one of the most fascinating things I learned was that to get to the next level up, which is AA1, we have to have a 30% bond balance, which is never going to happen for a school. Because you have employees that, I mean, we need to spread, we're not alone.
Right, that's on there.
It's on there, yeah, right, right. So I just wanted to point out that because that was interesting. And then the bond is set to close on April 3rd, and then we should have a wire transfer shortly thereafter. So as soon as we have that, we can start buying and purchasing. So Adam and I will start doing RFPs for the owner purchasing because you like it to go, the longer you have, the more potential that you'll have. So that's it.
Do we have any updated, like new prints or layouts that we can?
We don't, we're working on it. We're working, and Glenn Hack has been.
This is exciting.
This is so exciting. And Glenn Hack has been participating in all of the robotics. And then we're inviting anybody, like I invited Josh, Ash, Inceam, Tolemae to come into the band room because he wanted storage, but now he changed his mind, he has ones, instruments, which we'll figure out what, and the digital broadcast because Sam will be the one who's doing the digital broadcast when that's in. So yeah, so we're bringing in the people that have a actual use and clients already coordinating smart board sessions with teachers to see which ones they prefer because if they're using it, they're a bunch of people. So yeah.
I think it was really interesting, too, that this is the first time we've seen each of the big patch packages in here, and they give you timelines.
Yeah, it's getting exciting.
They're within those timelines, but they could be a few. But I think the best part of it was is we have an amazing team.
We do.
From Bart Now and from the architect firm partners. They they are just kind of amazing. And Tim, the project superintendent, has been here before, so he knows a lot of the minds coming in. He started the donut shop and shut down, by the way. I just told Joel that he rides a motorcycle and wears some other caps.
Here, and he makes a green apple pie. But it's really fun to see this going.
I love the Rufus person.
Yeah, you have to, it may not be exciting, but it's so heated because if you do everything else, and it's just.
It is, if you're the teacher and student, it's going to rain now.
Yeah, that's true.
Excellent. All right, anything else for us tonight?
I do have, unless you have questions.
Questions for Mrs. Dobler tonight? All right, I'll entertain the last motion then.
I move to adjourn the meeting at 6:23 PM.
It's moved by a Member Rosenau, supported by a Member Bobstein, to adjourn the meeting at 6:23 PM. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, meeting closed. Please pass your black folders in if you have one.